Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting of the City Council of University City to order on February 25, 2019. Ms. Reese, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Clay.
Present.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
Councilmember Hales.
Councilmember Cusick.
Here.
Councilmember Smothersen.
Here.
Mayor Crowe. Here, thank you very much. Would everyone please take a moment? I think you've already seen the agenda. Would welcome a motion that the agenda be approved. Motion made by Ms. Carr, is there a second? Second by Mr. Cusick. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Reese, we have a proclamation for National Athletic Trainer Month. I think that all the council members likely have that before them. I don't know necessarily that we need to read the proclamation, but to all members of council, know that the proclamation is there and then we will sign it and move forward. Before you, you have the minutes of the February 11, 2019, regular session. A motion that they be approved? Motion by Mr. McMahon, is there a second? Second by Mr. Clay. Are there any discussion? Mr. Hales?
I just have one, really a question for you. We have speakers come up at various meetings and they're asked to give their name and address. It's common for people to give the name or give the address of a business or organization that they may be representing. I noticed in the last meeting, there was a speaker who gave an address. It was not a residential address, and I looked up the address and it showed, I believe, three different organizations that were within that building. However, she didn't mention which organization she was representing. Is there a specific policy about which address, if they're representing an organization, to state that? Or?
I think that if you are using an address of an organization, it is, I would hope as the presiding officer, that I would ask that the organization be mentioned by the speaker. In this particular case, I'm not exactly sure what the speaker was referencing, but I think it's important for all of us to sort of be attuned to if a speaker gives an address that may not necessarily be the appropriate one, to please let me know or we can ask the question regarding the address.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments regarding February 11 minutes? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. You now have before you the study session on parking requirements from February the 11th, if there are motion that they be approved. Motion by Ms. Carr, seconded by Mr. Hales. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clay?
Can we use your microphone, please?
I certainly can. I apologize. Yes, we have a reappointment of Wayne Flesch to the Senior Commission. There's a motion to reappoint. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Carr. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You will please note that Cindy Theory was sworn into the Arts and Letters Commission. Michael Alter, I believe, is here tonight to be sworn into the Loop Special Business District.
I, Michael Alter. Do solemnly swear that I possess all of the qualifications and am not subject to any of the disqualifications named in the charter for the office I am about to assume. That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of the State of Missouri and the Charter and ordinances of University City. That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of the State of Missouri and the Charter and ordinances of University City. And that I will faithfully and conscientiously discharge the duties of the office I am about to assume with impartiality and justice. And that I will faithfully and conscientiously discharge the duties of the office I am about to assume with impartiality and justice. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Our next swearing-in is for Matthew Erker to be sworn into the Economic Development Retail Sales Tax Board.
I, Matt Erker. Do solemnly swear that I possess all of the qualifications and am not subject to any of the disqualifications named in the charter for the office I am about to assume. I, Matt Erker, do solemnly swear that I possess all of the qualifications and am not subject to any of the disqualifications named in the charter for the office I am about to assume. That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of the State of Missouri and the Charter and ordinances of University City. And that I will faithfully and conscientiously discharge the duties of the office I am about to assume with impartiality and justice. That I will faithfully and conscientiously discharge the duties of the office I am about to assume with impartiality and justice. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And to everyone, as we always say, one of the best things you can do for your community is to serve on a commission, so there are always applications that can be found in the city clerk's office and online so that we could appoint more people to more commissions. So, thank you very much again to Mike and Matt for your willingness to serve the community as well as Ms. Theory. We'll now move forward now into the citizen participation section of the agenda. This is limited to 15 minutes. When your name is called, please speak with your name and address first, and you are limited to five minutes, and then we'll move forward. First request to speak is from Linda Shaw. And you'll likely need to put the microphone on by hitting the button at the bottom center, or Lorie can.
To Mayor Crowe and the City Manager and the illustrious Council, my name is Linda Shaw and I live at 846 Water Avenue, University City, and I represent Fair U-City and University City Community Foundation. I have been a resident of University City for the past 47 years. I'm a former University City business owner, and I am presently volunteering on the board of the University City Community Foundation, and I have been actively involved with the Fair U-City Committee for four years. I know there are some new members and maybe some of you old members. I just wanted to give you a short, brief history of how we got here, and then I'll turn it over to our treasurer, once he's called up of our foundation. I have also provided you with a pack of materials. I'll go through that chronologically while I read this quickly. In 2011, a small group of volunteers from the U-City Community-founded Fair U-City as a nonprofit organization. The volunteers envisioned, organized, and staged the community fair to raise funds for a foundation that would support organizations doing good for the community of University City. The funds were supposed to be used for the community. That president who chaired that was Melcine Henderson, a longtime University City resident. Early on in the tenure, we did receive some funding from the city. A previous city manager saw the fair as a community development effort that could not be undertaken by the city staff because it was a bigger project. He provided some fundings, as well as some in-kind services as an official partner of the fair, services which we have received yearly. We also partner every year with the School District of University City and have done so since 2011. The fair has been an annual event drawing thousands of people from University City, the metropolitan area, and out-of-towners who are just happy to be there that I've seen. Guests enjoy entertainment and music, food, carnival rides, vendors from all over sell their wares there in our community's largest park, Heeman Community Park. Over the years, the fair took under its wing the University City Jazz Festival, which is now held on Saturday of the fair weekend. One of the largest renowned jazz festivals in the State of Missouri. We provide a small siphon to this jazz nonprofit organization to help underwrite the jazz festival. We encourage community participation by providing a community stage where local musicians and dancers and others can perform and show their talents. Our children's area of the fair has expanded. We begin giving out hundreds of free books to children and families that come to the fair. We collaborate with Missouri Humanities Council, and last year, Half Price Books provided us with some books. We now partner with the University City Library, who provide library cards on-site as well as they do arts and crafts for the children that come. Did I note that everything in the children's area is free? We have initiated a new initiative called the Kids Healthy Choice Project within the fair. This initiative's mission is to combat childhood obesity and encourage healthy lifestyle in children by giving them the option to choose free healthy snacks. We collaborate with Aldi and Dearburg to provide free healthy snacks for our younger fair visitors such as fruit, juice, water, and other delights. That letter to Aldi's is in your pack where we thank them, as well as there are pictures showing some of the kids that were enjoying the fair Healthy Choice Project. We also provide vision screening as well as health screening that's provided by professional healthcare that come from People's Health Clinic in Walgreens. And of course, we give kids a chance to utilize the carnival rides at a discount price. Each year, we hope to make the fair more memorable than last.
Ma'am, your five minutes is up. Are you close to wrapping up?
Yes, I am. University City Community Foundation was started by the funds, and we administer grants through our foundation. In 2016, we raised enough funds. In 2017, we put our board together, and in 2018, the funds that we raised was distributed to eight community nonprofits in our community. That list is in your packet. There are eight, the amount of money that we distributed. And I believe that I am complete. I also want to invite you guys to our fundraiser that you have in your pack, or provide that or put it on your website or your newsletter. We're steadily raising funds, and if you think you can dance, come out to the event. I'm going to turn this over now. When you call your next speaker, it should be our treasurer, Robert Parker. Thank you.
Our next speaker is, in fact, Robert Parker, so please come forward. Again, please state your name and address for the record, and there's a five-minute time limit.
Yes, my name is Robert Parker, and I'm at 6900 Delmar over there, 63130, and I am representing Fair U-City. And Ms. Shaw covered everything that I would have said. Thank you and have a great year.
Well, there you go. Well, I won't go there. Our next request to speak is from Ms. Donna McGee.
Good evening. My name is Donna McGee, and I reside at 7584 Melrose. I would like to thank you all for this opportunity to present. In my absence from presenting at the last few meetings, some progress has been made. Thank you, a special thanks to Mr. Ewall and some of the gentlemen from forestry who have been working, they've been out trimming branches from my roof, from over my roof, and this occurred prior to the first winter storm, and I was grateful for that because, as I mentioned before, the farmers' almanac had been predicting a harsh winter. We know God is in control of the elements, but I was thankful that before that first storm happened, they were able to get out and trim my roof. And again, those guys always leave the property nice and neat, so I'm forever grateful for that. Since then, I've been able to clean out my gutters for the second time to free them from branches and the large sycamore leaves. I would still like the tree cut down. I don't hate trees, you know how I feel about cherry blossom trees and trees, but I would like to cut down. I think it's just in a bad place, right next to my driveway, and we don't have a tree lawn. It's right in my yard because I live in the cul-de-sac, and the tree is well in my yard. The city tree has large branches that are still far into my yard and cross my property line, so I would love to have it, have those branches removed immediately to prevent any further damage on my side of the property. Again, I feel firm about this. Experience is the greatest teacher. Again, I had a city tree fall on my car some years ago. I watched a city tree fall right before my eyes, two houses down, on September 8, while I was cleaning out my yard. It fell on the neighbor's roof, and nobody was hurt. There was a language barrier with a family that resides in that home, and I'm just thankful that no one got hurt. So, again, thank you for this opportunity. Some have asked about the tree update, so I wanted to present and let them know that the guys are still working on that. Again, thanks to Mr. Ewall, and I call him the worker bees. They're very gracious, and they come out and they take care of business, and they really do a good job and clean the property. Thank you all.
Thank you. Our final request to speak on a non-agenda item is Ms. Erin Ginsburg.
Hello, my name is Erin Ginsburg. I live at 430 West Point Court, and I'm here to talk about two things. The first is that there is a low-cost spay and neuter clinic for pets that's being held March 9th and 10th. I'm going to give a copy of the flyer to Ms. Reese so that more folks can get their pets spayed and neutered. So, that's the message from St. Louis University City, Trap New to Return Kitties. And the second item I'm talking about is I'm speaking in support of the Olive N170 development. There has been talk of redeveloping this area since the 1960s, but the third ward has continued to see a decline in home values and an increase in deteriorating businesses, homes, and infrastructure. So, I'm thanking you, City Council, for being the first civic leaders to take action on this pressing need that's been affecting our community. I'd also like to make sure that folks realize that PGAV's error has no impact on the amount of money that other taxing districts would receive from the project, and it has no impact on the three, on three of the sales taxes that the city would receive. The error only lessens the amount of money available for repayment of any TIF bonds or notes. So, in other words, we're still targeting $15 million to go towards helping our third ward neighbors and Olive Corridor businesses. We're still focused on minority contracting for source employment, and an estimated $12 million in additional funding for our parks and storm waters, $6.2 million in additional funding for our fire protection, and $6.2 million in additional funding for economic development. Thank you again for taking action instead of just talking about this issue that has been facing our community for decades.
Thank you. That concludes this portion of the agenda. We'll now move forward. Before you, members of council, you have the consent agenda motion to be, motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Carr, seconded by Mr. McMahon. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move forward to unfinished business. May we have the second reading of Bill Number 93, am I doing that right? 9381.
An ordinance fixing the compensation to be paid to city officials and employees as enumerated herein from and after its passage and repealing ordinance 7086.
May we have the third reading?
An ordinance fixing the compensation to be paid to the city officials and employees as enumerated herein from and after its passage and repealing ordinance number 7086.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Carr, is there a second? Second by Mr. Cusick. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Hales?
Aye.
Councilmember Cusick?
Aye.
Councilmember Smothersen?
Councilmember Clay?
Mayor Crowe?
Aye. We will now move forward to new business resolution number 2019-3. Who would like to introduce a motion to approve? It would be Ms. Carr. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hales. I believe that we have a request to speak on this item before council speaks. I think the first person requesting to speak is Ms. Amy DeVall.
Thank you. And thank you for letting me speak before you this evening. My name is Amy DeVall. I'm a third-generation U-City resident, and I currently live in Ward 1 at 8160 Gannon with my husband and three children. I'm here tonight to publicly oppose Resolution 2019-3 and show my support for the Better Together proposal. Ultimately, I want to encourage U-City Council members and residents to do the same. We all know U-City is an incredible place to live, play, and work, but our daily lives are not confined to U-City's six-mile footprint. We're part of a larger region, and it's a region that continues to get overlooked and mischaracterized because of the barriers we put in place more than 140 years ago, and we're still willing to uphold those barriers today. And these barriers continue to block our potential. For example, U-City currently has to compete with surrounding municipalities for business. The Better Together proposal calls for one economic development plan to eliminate internal competition, making it more affordable to bring new businesses into our area. The U-City police officers, who are superb, are at a disadvantage because they're operating in a fragmented system. Better Together allows for streamlined services and data sharing with the rest of the region. And with one unified police force, officers can move freely within the region, allowing crime reduction strategies to be implemented on a region-wide basis. The Better Together plan would offer greater tax equity and more efficient distribution of funds to support services that benefit us all, like public health and safety initiatives, among others. Simply put, when our region succeeds, we all succeed. The population in St. Louis City and St. Louis County is declining, and our region's economy is not growing like our peers. Look at Louisville. Look at Indianapolis. In other words, as a divided region, we are falling, and I think it's time for us to stand up and unite, and it's my hope that U-City can help lead the way. I just wanted to share that with you publicly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next request to speak on this item is Mr. Leif Johnson.
I thank the councilman and mayor for this opportunity to address you.
Could you please give your name and address?
I'm sorry. Leif Johnson, 836 Barclay Square, University City. Regional government, as far as I can see, is the biggest propaganda campaign I have ever seen in this, in this city or this area. Some of us have accepted or rejected arguments that have been made. Some of us have taken sides on the two current proposals, the Sinkfield and the Freeholders. But why has no one, so far that I know of, questioned the very premise of these Sinkfield and Freeholder plans? Do we need regional government? Well, what about all these tiny municipalities? Well, what about them? Any small community can contract it out, can contract out to cooperatives, like we have in North County. They can make bilateral agreements with their neighboring communities. They can consolidate politically with their neighbors. They can even dissolve their municipality into the county if they choose. This process, of course, is already taking place. Well, what about efficiency? Well, what about it? Take University City. Would it be more efficient to merge all of our services into the county? Think about that. Would it be really more significantly efficient? Probably not, nor for the other localities of more than 5,000 people. Local governments exist to take care of the most essential services of our population. It exists on that level to reflect the immediate needs of the people. The local, county, state form of government is standard throughout the United States and also in most other Western democracies. Sinkfield and his business alliance want to expand the tax base to a countywide level.
I'm here tonight to publicly oppose Resolution 2019-3 and show my support for the Better Together proposal. Ultimately, I want to encourage U-City Council members and residents to do the same. We all know U-City is an incredible place to live, play, and work, but our daily lives are not confined to U-City's six-mile footprint. We're part of a larger region, and it's a region that continues to get overlooked and mischaracterized because of the barriers we put in place more than 140 years ago, and we're still willing to uphold those barriers today. And these barriers continue to block our potential. For example, U-City currently has to compete with surrounding municipalities for business. The Better Together proposal calls for one economic development plan to eliminate internal competition, making it more affordable to bring new businesses into our area. The U-City police officers, who are superb, are at a disadvantage because they're operating in a fragmented system. Better Together allows for streamlined services and data sharing with the rest of the region. And with one unified police force, officers can move freely within the region, allowing crime reduction strategies to be implemented on a region-wide basis. The Better Together plan would offer greater tax equity and more efficient distribution of funds to support services that benefit us all, like public health and safety initiatives, among others. Simply put, when our region succeeds, we all succeed. The population in St. Louis City and St. Louis County is declining, and our region's economy is not growing like our peers. Look at Louisville. Look at Indianapolis. In other words, as a divided region, we are falling. And I think it's time for us to stand up and unite, and it's my hope that U-City can help lead the way. I just wanted to share that with you publicly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next request to speak on this item is Mr. Leif Johnson.
I thank the councilman and mayor for this opportunity to address you.
Could you please give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Leif Johnson, 836 Barclay Square, University City. Regional government, as far as I can see, is the biggest propaganda campaign I have ever seen in this city or this area. Some of us have accepted or rejected arguments that have been made. Some of us have taken sides on the two current proposals, the Sinkfield and the Freeholders. But why has no one, so far that I know of, questioned the very premise of these Sinkfield and Freeholder plans? Do we need regional government? Well, what about all these tiny municipalities? Well, what about them? Any small community can contract it out -- can contract out to cooperatives, like we have in North County. They can make bilateral agreements with their neighboring communities. They can consolidate politically with their neighbors. They can even dissolve their municipality into the county if they choose. This process, of course, is already taking place. Well, what about efficiency? Well, what about it? Take University City. Would it be more efficient to merge all of our services into the county? Think about that. Would it be really more significantly efficient? Probably not, nor for the other localities of more than 5,000 people. Local governments exist to take care of the most essential services of our population. It exists on that level to reflect the immediate needs of the people. The local, county, state form of government is standard throughout the United States and also in most other Western democracies. Sinkfield and his business alliance want to expand the tax base to a countywide level to float massive new bond issues. They don't want the voters to stop them by voting down bond issues like we did in University City in 2015. So they want to get rid of the municipalities. Is there anything wrong with U-City as it is presently constituted? Consider the kinds of roads and emergency services we might have if we were reduced to existing county levels. Consider the kinds of roads and emergency services we could have after the county has issued hundreds of millions, if not billions, of new bonds, including bonds to bail out the increasingly shaky bonds of St. Louis City. If we vote to abolish our local government, we will never get it back. Thank you.
Our next request to speak is Ms. Judy Canoyer.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilpeople. I've come this evening in order to speak on behalf of and support.
Name and -- I'm sorry, Judy, your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
It was nice to see you back, and I apologize, I didn't say name and address.
No, it's my -- I am sorry. My name is Judy Canoyer, and I live at 6404 Cates Avenue here in University City. And as I said, I am here to speak in support of Resolution 2019-3. I haven't studied it to the extent that Mr. Johnson has, but there are a couple of things that I think need to be considered when looking at this resolution. The first thing is that municipalities take care of very immediate services and very immediate needs. I see University City here as a crossroads. I think we finally have before us a council and a mayoral system that can move University City forward. And that has to do with the I-70 Olive Project, but it also has to do with other issues that are understood well by people who live in University City, who have lived here and who know what the local, to-the-ground issues are. Another one has to do with Washington University and how University City interacts with Washington University. I think we could be on the verge of really doing something significant to prop up University City in that interaction. I'm not sure that this is something that people in a regional government would at best understand and at worst care anything about. So that's a second one. The third one has to do with the ambulance service, which is kind of like the other services here. To get that service to really work, I think we really need to understand what has happened before. Hopefully, this could be something that could go back the way it was before. I don't see that kind of thing happening in a regional government. So what I'm saying is I think that municipal government takes care best of a micro-region. Therefore, I am not in favor. Secondly, it has to do with the way that this setup is proposed. Better Together comes from somewhere on high. There is already another system in place. I'm not endorsing the Freeholder system, but it seems to be more of a ground-up, bottoms-up kind of a proposal if we wanted to do it. But something coming down from above by people who do not live here and who do not understand, I find really suspicious, and I am not for that kind of a system. So procedural-wise, I would not be either. So for both of those reasons, I am supporting you. I understand Councilwoman Carr has a petition that she wants to sign, wants us to sign. If we are interested in supporting that, I will be signing it. I encourage others to do so, too. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the citizens who signed up to speak on this resolution. Do members of council have comments or discussion they would like to have prior to the vote? Mr. Clay?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Crowe, I'll just say briefly that this resolution is about a process. It's a process of how consolidation would happen. The process that is articulated in the Better Together plan is opposed to our legislative platform as University City that advocates for local control and local decision-making wherever possible. I will speak for myself in this regard, that certainly I understand the challenges that are created by our current system of small municipalities. We have some challenges. Our police are well-versed in with some municipalities to the north. And so we recognize that because there are different police systems and jurisdictions and other things taking place, some of very day-to-day things that folks in Third Ward in particular have to deal with could be ameliorated by some sort of consolidated system. But there's a way in which it can and probably should be done. And so in my mind, that's what this resolution is about. There are issues that stem from our lack of regional cooperation, but there's a way to get at that. And as the Better Together plan, as currently articulated, has real problems with, in my view at least, with a process of how to get there.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Ms. Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Regardless of who proposes a plan, the bottom line is that we should have the right to self-determination. If it is our government, we should have a say on how that government is structured and how it will serve us. And I think that's what this resolution is about. It is simply saying that we oppose going for a state vote, and that state vote will, in fact, disenfranchise the people that live in this area, because 77% of the voters will live outside of our area, and they will make a decision for us. Our forefathers fought for the right to self-determination, and even here in the 21st century, I think it is a worthy liberty to stand for. So I won't speak for or against any other plans. I think that considering different forms of government is a worthwhile exercise, but in the end, the people must speak, and the people who live here and are subject to that government must have the right to determine their own destiny.
Any other requests to speak from members of council? Mr. Cusick?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say for a moment, the many people are maybe opposed to the formation of a Freeholder meeting that would be -- and the petition that Councilmember Carr and I also have copies of the petition are circulating is to force the city and the county to appoint a Freeholders Board, so that those of us that live in the city and the county can come together and we can express what our concerns are, and we can have a voice in what our government will be and what it will look like that will rule over St. Louis City and St. Louis County. As it stands, the REX Sinkfield Project program, the petition initiative that will be on the ballot, and I believe November 2020, removes the ability for those of us that live in the city and county to have any voice in how this new government would look like. I think Councilmember Hale was quoted in the paper that this is essentially a hostile takeover. The Board of Freeholders would be a process for those of us that live in the city and county to come together and say, do we want to merge the city and the county? And if so, what do we want this ruling body to look like? As it stands right now, the process that is being pushed to the voters throughout the state eliminates the ability for any of those of us that live in the city and the county to have any voice in what this governing body would look like. This would be, make no mistake about it, this would be government without representation by those of us that live in the city and the county. Thank you.
Mr. Hales?
Thank you. As Councilmember Cusick said, I was quoted in the paper. I was a little caught off guard by it, but last week I had the opportunity to go down to Jefferson City. Representative Gina Walsh from Belle Fountain, I believe, introduced a Senate resolution, effectively very much a mirror of our resolution. If I recall, there were 57 municipalities that had submitted similar resolutions. And after the meeting, it was -- we had the opportunity to sit down with our new state senator, Brian Williams, and we also sat down with a number of other officials from north of us. We had a council member from Ferguson, and I believe some from North Woods. And the senator wanted to know what our feedback was and what our constituents were saying. And what I've heard consistently is the folks of U-City want, by and large, the control over their destiny, as Ms. Carr said. And what was interesting about the conversation we had with these other city officials is they all have the same concern. They want to have control in their community as to how many police officers they have on the street and in their neighborhoods. I got to tell you, having done two ride-alongs with our police department, we have a great presence out there. And I can also tell you, because we have invested, as St. Louis County, as much as we have in our communication systems, our systems and our communication in St. Louis County and with our neighboring municipalities, I think, far exceeds what the city has. And I don't know what it would cost to get the city portion of it up to date with where we are. But the concerns that have been expressed, I strongly support this resolution. I agree with everything that my colleagues have said thus far about process, and there are other ways forward that I think are far more prudent, that afford all of us as residents and voters in St. Louis County and St. Louis City the right to be heard and not to have our votes diminished by millions of people outside of our region.
Mr. McMahon?
I'll be brief, because I think many of the residents that already spoke speak hit a lot of the points that I had, as well as my councilmembers. But I'd also like to point out that we don't even know when this new mega-city is created with the 33 new units, where those lines will be. Will they cut University City down the middle at Hanley? Will they cut us through at Delmar? Will we still be a voting bloc? Or will they chop us up so we don't even know? And who's going to run for office? It's going to be partisan now, and who's going to fund those elections? It's not how U-City does their elections. You're going to be in a huge district. Who can afford to run in those elections? Most of these elections here are funded by people, neighbors, and friends contributing small amounts of money. Are you going to be able to do that when you have a large voting area? Who's going to fund those? Who's going to collectively get a certain percentage of those 33 together and fund them so that those people can then direct the economic benefits to the districts that they think best deserve it? Will we be one of them? I don't know, because they haven't told us where we'll sit inside of that new designation that's drawn. Usually, the elected officials. We would get to, when we have a census, our lines may change. We're not going to have a voice in that, the way this plan's drawn up. So who's even going to represent you? You won't even have a chance to know that until it's well too late. So I don't believe this is the right way to go, either.
I thought I would take just a minute, since I've not really spoken a great deal about this proposal. A couple of things I would like to say to not only the folks in the room, but of course the much larger audience that now watches us through our camera, which is incredible. And that is that we all owe it to ourselves to read the report, but most importantly, to read the amendment itself. A lot of the rest of it is, we can either call it informative or propaganda, but what you really need to read is the amendment itself. And one of the things that has caused me a great deal of discomfort has been the presumption that a statewide vote is necessary to accomplish this. I understand the opinion issued by Mike Wolf, but what I would say to you is if, in fact, there's a genuine desire for us to merge the city, the county, and even the municipalities, the amendment to the Constitution would be that we would then take that vote ourselves. That's how you would amend the Constitution. You would say, amend the Constitution so that the residents of the city, the residents of the county can make that change. Here, we are bootstrapping. We're making this all-in-one fell swoop, that in fact, this isn't being done because it has to be done this way. It is being done because this is the strategic way to have the vote decided by a group of people in outstate Missouri who really are going to be completely disengaged from this process and paying attention to an ad campaign funded by one person. Now, I want to make sure as I say that, that you can't really say that University City hasn't been for regionalism. We are probably, clearly, if not the most liberal city in Missouri, we got to be right up there. And we are one of the charter members of the Municipal League. I can't think of any propositions that have come forward for the betterment of the county or our neighbors that we haven't truly supported. But this issue needs to be decided by the members of the city, residents of the city of St. Louis and the people of St. Louis County. Mr. Hales and I had a conversation the other day, and he quoted with me what one of the senators has said in Jefferson City. And you just have to put this in context. If the United States Congress says that Illinois and Missouri are going to merge, and oh, by the way, everybody in Illinois and Missouri get to vote on it, but so did the other 48 states, that logic doesn't make sense. And it doesn't make sense here. We're talking about a region that consists of about 1.5 million people, and yet we have counties in Missouri that have 5,000, 8,000, 10,000 people, yet all of a sudden, we are coming back saying that this is what the state of Missouri needs to do to better St. Louis. The other thing I want, I don't think we've talked about this, and this is one of the things that is bothering me, maybe intellectually, but I think actually very practically, and that is that the vast majority of the residents of St. Louis County live in municipalities that, yes, we have a nonpartisan mayor and council, but more importantly, we have professional city managers, people who studied this, people who are educated. We are being asked, literally asked, to go from professionally-run cities to political subdivisions that will be partisan and will not be run by educated professionals who studied government. You've got to think about that. The vast majority of people in St. Louis County benefit by having the professional management that almost every municipality in St. Louis County has. The other thing, you may not have seen this, but our interim director of finance, we have to put a fiscal note out for the state auditor. When public safety moves into the metropolis, when Public Works was in the metropolis, and all the sales taxes and the tax revenues that go that are commensurate with those services, we are then left, every single year, each of you in this room, responsible for a $4.8 million annual deficit to run the rest of University City. Now, this city runs pretty close, but we run in the black. But when we move those taxes into the city, into the new city, we are left every year with a $4.8 million deficit, and we're either cutting services or we're raising taxes, and we're really not going to have the authority and we're really not gonna have the authority to do those things. I wanna make sure that everybody understands that. The next thing, when someone tells you that they are going to phase out the earnings tax in the city of St. Louis, and that they will still be able to make all of the bond payments on those bonds at a much higher interest rate than any other city around, you have to pause, because I don't think the math works. We are going to be asked at some point in time to pay off those bonds if we merge the city and the county together. Now, I don't typically tend to swing too far to the conservative side, but I have to give County Councilmember Fitch at least some points here, because there is a process out there. When people buy bonds in the marketplace, they are accepting a market risk, and the pathway forward would clearly be for the city to bankrupt, default on the bonds, negotiate with the bondholders, and then move forward into the county. Otherwise, you will clearly be seeing our residents not only being asked to fund a deficit here, but pay off the bonds in the city. So I come back still to this transformation from professional to political. We are going to be one of thirty-three. We aren't gonna be, it's not gonna be us in total. We realize that we're gonna get sliced and diced. But if you're asking this question about thirty-three subdivisions, whatever you're gonna call them, isn't that what the city of St. Louis already has? They have twenty-seven wards with aldermen, and now we're being asked to replicate what they have done. We will end up with thirty-three fiefdoms. Think about that. And my comments, by the way, just so everybody knows, my comments are not, the University City always has to stay University City, because that's not me. That may be some of you, that's really not me. Mine is that this proposal doesn't make sense. Now, by the way, are there good things in the proposal? Yes, there are. Yes, there are. There is no reason why there's a city department of health and a county department of health. That's an easy one. Clearly, the city and the county municipal courts have not been successful, and merging the court systems together is a great place to start. But when you talk about the police departments, and I just wanna come back to this, you are asking us to become a part of a police department that currently has at least a dozen police officers under investigation, one of which for playing Russian roulette. And you are asking us to say that bigger is better, and you're asking us to become a part of that larger unit, and that just doesn't work. And I frankly don't think that joining the county police department says that much more either for us. I don't understand the benefit there. The other thing I wanna speak about very briefly, and I believe there clearly was an intention here, but if we all believe, and I think most everybody in University City believes, that education is the great equalizer, the great equalizer, then how do you move this forward and leave our kids off the table? Literally, you don't do this, piece me away that's coming. So what I would actually say in the end is where I began. Please read the amendment. Please. Ask questions. Talk with your neighbors. Ask us. I do hope that you will consider the freeholder petitions. It takes fifteen thousand signatures. I hope you will do more than sign. I would enjoy for you to actually collect signatures, because they don't have to be from University City. They can be from fifteen thousand from the county, and I think five thousand from the city. So I appreciate this resolution coming before us, and frankly, I appreciate the fact that better-together put this, because it's forcing us to have a conversation that we should've had a long time ago. But having the people of Farber, Missouri, Neosha, Missouri, Maryville, Missouri, Bolivar, you name it, having those folks decide our fate is not what any of us are about, and I hope that my colleagues will join in voting for this resolution. We have before us Resolution Number 2019-3. I will just call for the vote unless someone wants to do a roll call. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and it passed unanimously. Now, we can move forward on the next resolution, excuse me, the next bill, which is Bill 9382. And for Bill 9382, for those of you here as citizens, this bill contains an emergency clause, which means that we have to do all three readings tonight. It is part of a procedure that has been done in St. Louis at Price Circuit Court, I believe. And if anyone, do any members of council want the city attorney to give a one-minute description? Ms. Carr, so Mr. Mulligan, would you please give us a brief description of what has brought us to this point?
Sure. This bill will establish a surcharge of $7 per municipal court case to be paid to the Missouri Director of Revenue to the credit of the statewide court automation fund, which may be used to fund the Show Me Courts. That is a new record in case management system being developed by the Office of State Court Administrator. The St. Louis County Circuit Court Presiding Judge has issued an administrative order. The municipalities in St. Louis County utilize this new system, and in order to do that, you have to establish and collect a $7 surcharge. The presiding judge's order has specified dates for various courts. For this one, it's March 1st, 2019. So in order to meet that, the surcharge has to be established and collected accordingly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mulligan. Could we please have, I need one member of council to introduce the bill. Mr. Hales has introduced Bill Number 9382. May we have the first reading?
An ordinance amending Section 125.260 of the University City Municipal Code relating to assessment of special court costs, surcharges, and judgments by repealing said section and enacting a new Section 125.260, and thereof containing an emergency clause.
Thank you. We've now had the first reading. I now would ask a motion to approve with a second. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Cusick, is there a second? By Mr. Clay. May we have the second reading?
An ordinance amending Section 125.260 of the University City Municipal Code relating to assessment of special court costs, surcharges, and judgments by repealing said section and enacting a new Section 125.260, and thereof containing an emergency clause.
May we have the third reading?
An ordinance amending Section 125.260 of the University City Municipal Code relating to assessment of special court costs, surcharges, and judgments by repealing said section and enacting a new Section 125.260, and thereof containing an emergency clause.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Is there any discussion? Ms. Carr?
I'm assuming that these surcharges get paid, and by whom do they get paid, and how does this affect indigent, I guess, those who are charged, but who may be indigent?
The, well, they're collected in every municipal court case that is not dismissed or where the person's found not guilty discharged. As far as indigents, the municipal court judge has the authority to waive court costs in certain instances, one of which is when it's been established that the person's indigent. However, if you actually read closer in that state law that authorizes a waiver, it only pertains to certain court costs. So there are a number of surcharges that municipal courts have, so it applies only to some of them.
If I may follow up, Mayor. So what would you expect for the average person coming to court or being charged with something? What would their court costs be reflected on this?
So say a stoplight violation. I believe we added it up the other day, and it's in the neighborhood of about $35, $35.50. So just going through them, you have a $12 general court cost, you have $7.50 for the crime victims compensation fund, you have $3 for the peace officer standards, $4 for victims of domestic violence, $2 for the inmate, prisoner, detainees' security fund, and then lastly, $7 for the statewide court automation fund.
And this is assuming that the person is found guilty or pleads guilty. This is on top of the fine, is that correct?
Correct.
And then assuming that the person pleads not guilty, then, and is found to be not guilty, are they still paying the court costs?
No.
Okay.
There are no court costs if the person's found that guilty or the case is dismissed.
Thank you.
Mr. Clay?
And my questions ran largely along a similar vein, and just confirming that this is a fee that we have to charge per the administrative order. This is not optional.
Correct. In order to participate in the state Show Me Court system, you have to pay them the $7.
Understood, because I think to Councilmember Carr's point, certainly municipal fines and fees have been in at least the regional conversation, certainly since the events in Ferguson, and so I wanna make sure that we're doing all we can to charge what's appropriate, but really no more.
Right, and there's a cap on minor traffic, what they call minor traffic offenses, and that's in the state law, it's post-Ferguson. So there's a $225,000, I'm sorry, $225 cap the code authorizes, generally a fine up to $1,000 plus court costs. And that $225 includes the court costs. So by raising the court cost, it lowers the maximum you can fine somebody, because the combination cannot exceed $225. There's a scale based on prior violations and so on, but it will have that impact. So overall, if a person is, you know, at the level where they're maxing out, it won't cost anymore, but your garden variety stop sign ticket, say where it's a $50 fine, then there'd be an additional seven bucks. You wouldn't hit that maximum, so you're gonna end up paying the additional seven bucks for this.
Anything else? Hearing none. Ms. Reese, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Hales?
Aye.
Councilmember Cusick?
Aye.
Councilmember Smothersen?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Crowe?
Aye. The bill passes. Let's move on to council reports and businesses. Any items from my colleagues under this item? Mr. Clay?
Yes, I wanted to, I'm sorry, this is under council liaisons, can I go right to that? Okay. Last week, the senior commission met. It was a brief agenda. We did receive an update on the ITN program, which is the transportation program that the council has funded to allow rides for senior citizens. Currently, actually, the council agreed to fund essentially half the amount of scholarships that were available. A report, I believe, has been submitted to the city manager for council to release the other half of the funding. The funding that the council allocated, about $5,000, equals about thirty-four scholarships, so seventeen have been done. There has been an evaluation with those. Unfortunately, there have been a few that have gone unused, and that is due to unfortunate illness of some of the scholarship recipients and their inability to travel as a result of that illness, but many have been used, and the evaluations have been favorable. And again, I believe those are, either have been or will be transmitted to the city manager. So I'm assuming that will go out to council, and then if council deems it appropriate, the rest of the funding can be released based on that evaluation for the remainder of the scholarships.
Any other items under council reports and businesses? Hearing none. I will move forward to citizen participation. We have one request to speak. Mr. Glickert. Again, please take your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. Steve Glickert, 7750 BlackBerry Avenue. Revisiting a subject I brought up in August, six months ago, about the conditions that exist in the third ward, in the alleys. Let me set the boundaries again. Olive on the south, Plymouth on the north, Sutter on the east, Ferguson on the west. Very small, quarter to a third square mile area. The, what I wanna concentrate on are the vehicles. Many, many violations. I have brought this up in the past. I've emailed, I've sent pictures, I've provided addresses. In August, there were forty-one violators. As of last week, Wednesday, I drove through again, we're up to fifty-one. It's a small concentrated area. I don't know why it can't be addressed. At the same time in August, I emailed my council member, Mr. Cusick, about an abandoned car at the church at Amherst and Hanley. Within six days, gone. In December, forty or fifty Teslas show up in the 8,000 block of Olive. Within about three weeks, gone. So I don't know who was responsible for removing those, but Mr. Cusick is batting a thousand. Whoever that individual was that got rid of the Teslas is batting a thousand. You're 0-for-41, and 0-for-51 now since Wednesday. I would like to know why you can't remove these vehicles. It's a wide variety. They're parked on their lawns. There's twenty-five of them at 6509 Olive. There are two semi-trucks that haven't moved in a year. And I pointed this out to an email that you were copying on, Mr. Mayor, that it's right in back of somebody's house. Why, or how would you like to come out of your house every day to see that? So good working, hard-working people, good-hearted, have to deal with this every day, and it's all compacted into one area. So it's really convenient for you to look at. I've supplied you most of the information. I'd like to know why, if you can explain that in your comments tonight. And then I'd also like to know what you're gonna do, when you're gonna do it, and how long it's gonna take. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no further requests to speak. Are there any members of council that have additional comments they would like to make this evening? Ms. Carr?
So it was mentioned that there is a petition for the formation of a board of freeholders or electors that is going around. That is the constitutional way to consider a change in the structure of your government. And how that works is that either the, there are two ways to do it. Either the county executive and the mayor of St. Louis can call for the board of freeholders, which they have not done. In fact, they have endorsed the alternate, another plan. In fact, they have endorsed the alternate, another plan. Or the citizens may petition. And so, that's, that's what this is, and what, they would then meet within 30 days of appointment. The appointments would be advise and consent for both the county council, in the case of the county executive, and advise and consent in the case of the, by the Board of Aldermen, in the case of the mayor's, mayor of the city of St. Louis's selection. They would have a year to consider a plan. They can or cannot propose or agree on it. But whatever comes out of there, we, the people of the county of St. Louis, and we, the people of the city of St. Louis, will be the ones to determine if there's a plan, whether we want that or not. So, that is, that is the mechanism by which we operate. The mayor alluded to, to the fact that there's another way to do it. And, and in fact, all of the county-city consolidations, and I've done a great deal of research on that, have indicated that where there are constitutional barriers, the constitution is then changed first to allow for the formation of a certain new class of city, or to remove some of the impediments. And then, once that's created, then it's taken back to the area that would consider the consolidation. So, as the mayor very aptly pointed out, this is a way of forcing, forcing us to, 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 in a sense, be controlled, to have our destiny controlled. So, my point here is that, as Councilmember Cusick said, we are both carrying those petitions. If you have any interest in signing them, I would, I have one here tonight, and I'm sure, no, okay. So, I have, I have the petitions here tonight. For those of you that have been receiving my newsletter, I, I am in the process of educating people about not only this process, but about the Better Together plan, in the sense that we, that I'm doing exactly what the mayor has said. We have taken a look at the constitutional amendment, not the propaganda surrounding it, but the constitutional amendment, to see how that will affect all of the people who live in this area. So, you know, it's, there's no way to stop a petition drive. As you all know, it is one of our First Amendment rights to petition our government. In addition, there is a right in the Missouri Constitution to go for a constitutional amendment. So, you're not going to stop the, the collection of signatures on a petition, but, but it is possible to fight for our right to self-determination, to make that point outstate, and in the meantime, to, to consider what we, the people, want here in our region. Thank you.
Mr. Hales?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize three folks, since they're all in the room. In the last two weeks, I've, I've lost count of how many compliments I've received from residents who have been absolutely thrilled with the city's communication, particularly on public safety matters. And I know we had a couple of incidents in the, over the last two or three weeks that had, had folks concerned, and, and so I'd like to thank Ms. Bamberger, our communications director, as well as Chief Hampton and Captain Lemons, who I know himself puts out a lot of information. But what I'm hearing is, is the residents really appreciate, appreciate the increased communication and engagement. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Any other comments by a member of council? Hearing none, I would welcome a motion to go into closed session according to Missouri revised Statute 610.021, legal action causes of actions or litigation. Is there such a motion? Motion by Ms. Carr, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hale. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cusick?
Aye.
Councilmember Smotherson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Hales?
Aye.
Mayor Crowe?
Aye.